Okay, thank you. Okay, we'll call the special meeting of the selectmen tonight that talk about the town plan. It's the agenda. On this agenda, I've added a couple of things we're gonna do before we actually jump right into it. One is that we, the selectmen, are gonna have a little discussion about how they're gonna process and manage this tonight. I know we talked about it a little bit, but I wanna talk about some of my ideas, see if they wanna do something different. Then we also have an email from Fred Miller, which I'll read into the record. Get a motion to approve that agenda.
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Discussion on process. There was a couple of ways to look at this. One was I was gonna open it up to the public, let them discuss first, but we did that last meeting we had. So what I was thinking was if the select board members herself had some things they wished to discuss, they could talk about it first and explain those things and put that out, and then go from there, or we can do whatever you wish. What's your thoughts?
We do have some people here who were not at the meeting, the hearing. Are we gonna say that it's open in terms of raise your hand and pipe in when you see fit?
It's a public meeting, and I'm gonna, yeah, that's a good point. Rather than have a public comment period where all you can do is speak at the public comment and then not have a discussion, I'd rather have this be a general discussion if the board's in agreement. So we're not looking for you to stand up, make a statement, and sit back down, not be heard the rest of the night. We really wanna, wanna have an interaction. We wanna hear what's going on, we wanna say what we're saying, see if you agree or disagree. So it'll be much more of a open meeting than a rigid type setup.
Make a proposal here. I know that there's several of us up here who wanna make comments, and as we make our comments, we'll discuss each, we'll make the comments through the, through the, through the section, we'll mention what section we're on, we'll pause between sections and see if there's any comment from, on that section. But then I would also suggest that once we're all done, we open it up to public comment, because we may not hit everything that the public might want to talk about.
Sounds good. Any concerns, any other questions, comments?
I'm in agreement with that.
Okay. With that, who would like to start off on the board? Or would you like me to read Fred's email first, so we don't forget it?
Why don't we do that?
Okay. Okay, this is from Fred Miller. "Greetings. First, I would like to say thank God we are at the stage with the proposed new town plan where we, the citizens of Pownell, can offer input and critique of the, of the plan being put in front of us. It is very important that we, the people, use this time wisely and work with the select board to fine tune the plan into something that truly serves to the benefits of all of Pownell. The plan as proposed, however, is massive, weighing at least three times as much as the previous plan. Quite frankly, much of what is in there could and probably should be safely hauled. The hard-working and every busy citizen of this town should be respected, granted sufficient time to read through it all with understanding. As the select board and the citizens work through this process, we must do so with open minds, yet we must use our senses and challenge statements and investigate sources for accuracy and validity. The plan writers make many statements that beg for qualification, they should be expected to provide proof of their statement as well as insight into the process of creating the plan. Where the data tables are used, there must be adequate evidence that proves that use of that data table is essential, and that the conclusion drawn from said data is irrefutable. Although the bare minimum requirement is that the select board hold two public input meetings, I would urge the select board to provide more than the minimum required opportunity. Please be prepared to offer more than the two required public input meetings. This plan, when enacted, will have an effect on all citizens, and for that reason, it is essential that information reaches across all sectors of the town. No one should wake up on the day after the plan is enacted and say, 'I knew nothing about this.' It is becoming evident, though, that indeed the process of public notification used by Pownell is not working well. It assumes the citizens will visit certain sites and repost the notices. No member of the elected board or commission should ever say, 'While we posted the notice and no one showed up, so we assumed everyone was happy.' Please, let's work on finding new ways to give notice and involve a wider cross-section of our town." And he goes on, "My thoughts on the new plan," the very first sentence of the proposed new town plan makes following statement from the introduction section. Located at the southwest corner of Vermont, Pownell serves as a nexus connecting three states and several mid-to-large-sized towns and cities in the region. This has been bugging me for a long time, and I haven't been able to exactly pinpoint what was bothering me. Today, it dawned on me that their statement implies that Pownell's purpose is to be a nexus, nexus of connections to, for Massachusetts and New York. I will argue that the community culture and the beautiful landscape of Pownell does not serve that purpose. What does connect the two are highways that run through Pownell Route 7 and Route 346. Very clever way to begin a plan that is to be built around the idea of making an independent community subservient to the supposed high order of the surrounding states and communities. I conducted a quick poll on this subject yesterday by Facebook. The poll questioned, and voluntarily results are posted below. Of the 61 people who viewed the questions, 13, 21.31 percent, people responded. Of those 13, 11, 84.6 percent, people responded no. The other two voters responded yes and not sure.
How was the question phrased?
I'm gonna read them. They're here. "Do you agree with the following statement? Located at the southwest corner of Vermont, Pownell serves as a nexus connecting three states and several mid-to-large-sized towns and cities in the region."
May I interrupt for a minute?
Sure.
This survey is on a hidden, closed Facebook page. Eight to 10 people is hardly representative of the town. I have requested to be admitted to the page and denied. One of the people who were surveyed on this survey was kicked off of the page for responding in a way they didn't like.
Can you wait and respond it once I'm done doing the?
Yeah, I just, I just don't know that it's relevant to read the survey when it's a survey of 61 people allowed on a closed site.
Yeah, well, and you can make that statement at the end. Basically, what we, we've read everybody else's statement that came in, we should read his too.
Okay, just wanna make that public.
Okay. And basically, what he's got here is, is, no, this is not accurately represent Pownell, that was a plus eight, yes, this accurately represent Pownell, plus one, not sure, plus one. That was for that question. In reading that sentence and all that follows, I find I have to question whether or not the individuals who laboriously crafted this new plan actually hold love for this, this town, its people or its history. In reading the massive reworking of our simple plan, I found little to nothing that would indicate they do. In the section that follows entitled "Our Vision for Pownell," all of two sentences are spent on describing the current Pownell to a minimal degree, but then launches into speculation as to what Pownell could be if economic development strategies for the town are focused on the arts, and follows the model presented by Williamstown and North Adams, Mass, as well as Benetton focused on the arts. I posted another poll question, which asked the following. Should a town of Pownell become an art community based on the communities of Williamstown and North Adams, Mass? The poll results are shown below. Should the town of Pownell become an arts community based on the communities of Williamstown and North Adams, Mass? Was the question. There were 16 noes, one yes, and none of the rest. Fifty-two people polled, 20 responded, 19, 95, no, 5 percent, yes. Taken together with the opening statement claiming that Pownell serves as a nexus to adjoining economies, yeah, economic, one can see that the planning commission was, from the very beginning, focused on what Pownell isn't and what it doesn't offer to tourists and newcomers. I personally find it troubling that our new town plan, which the town desperately needs, was taking way off path, and instead was built around the notion that Pownell was served to the region, that the best days for Pownell as an independent community are gone and will not come back. As to the issue of manufacturing and attracting large employers to our town, in section 3.4.1, the planners said the following. There are a number of individuals and families run farms, providing high-quality food and some local opportunity for employment. Despite these local opportunities, most workers residing in Pownell have to travel for employment to Benetton, New York, or Western Massachusetts. This fact is not likely to change. The last sentence really needs to be qualified. There must be some overwhelming evidence presented in order for the statement to be valid. If, in fact, it is not likely to change due to status quo, then the things do, to do would be to change the status quo in order to make more things possible. They go on to include a section entitled "Resident-Owned Business and Larger Employers: Lessons From the Past." Here, the planners indulge in some of self-promotion and then further the idea that the door must be shut to large employers. They follow with a discussion of the small farms and cottage industries that make up their click, and then set down the language that is by design intended to discourage large employers from coming to town. Yes, I conducted a poll asking the following question. Should the town of Pownell explore options to encourage large manufacturers and other large businesses located to Pownell? Poll results are on the next page. Fifty-eight people polled, 19, 32.75 percent participated. Of those, 17, 89 percent said yes, and 2, 10.5 percent said no. And he repeats the question, and then he shows the graphics for where the yeses are 14 and the noes 2. These polls, which are admittedly representing a small subsection, do indicate that people that are usually not heard from will share their thoughts and feelings on a topic that presented the opportunity. I would suggest that the planning commission or the select board, with assistance from a citizens group, create a similar poll asking residents in town specific questions like these. They are specific to the plan, not vague questions like, "Are you concerned about the economy?" Perhaps it could put it on the town website. Thank you for consideration. Fred Miller, Swallow Hill, Rhode. Okay, that's been read into the record, and it will be part of the record. You had something you wanted to add?
I repeat, you know, that, I'll say it again, it's on, the survey is from a hidden, closed Facebook page that only accepts people that they want to accept. It is administered by Fred Miller, and I was denied access. It's representing a small portion of the town that are on this site, and it's the same people who have been saying stuff about the plan that have responded to the poll. I know of three people who have been kicked off of the site for saying things that the moderators don't like. And my, my big issue with the, with the page, well, we have two select board members who are on it, I don't know if they both know they're on it. But my big problem is that there's a discussion of transparency, and this page is not transparent at all. So I am gonna add it to the agenda next week to talk about our social media, but I appreciate everything else he had to say, and would like to discuss that, but the poll is...
Okay. If I can make a comment on it, just that Mr. Miller put a lot, obviously put a lot of thought into this, and he actually flat-out states that this is not a poll, and what he, what he suggests is that we conduct a similar poll on the town website in order to get a more cross, cross-representation-
Yes, I heard that.
-and cross-reference of, of what this is. There is nothing about this being on a closed Facebook site that makes it invalid. Either the argument stands on its merit, or it doesn't. And if you can do, support the argument, or refute the argument, then we ought to do so based on the merits of the argument, not based on where the poll was taken, or not based on, or any preconceived notions you might have.
We can agree to disagree. Can we let Sid's?
I wanted to see if any other selectman wanted to say anything? No, none heard?
Not yet.
Okay. Okay, Sid?
I don't want to agree.
Before, before you start, though, it should be clear that the planning board did run a, a poll.
Okay, that's all I was gonna say.
But do you know the numbers? I don't remember the numbers.
And can you also talk about the process on the poll?
Can you also identify yourself before you speak?
Just wanted to do that. Sid Smithers, Tubbs Road, I'm a member of the planning commission. The planning commission did conduct a poll by sending ballots and leaving ballots at various places in town, at Winchester's, at the various stores, the library, and people could respond to them. We would also send them to them if they asked for them. It was admittedly not well-done. It was very early in the stage of the planning process. The response was very low. Unfortunately, I don't have the numbers right in hand, and the person who had all of that stuff, Rosemarie Peltier, is not on the planning commission anymore, so that institutional memory is gone. But I will say that it was a low-response poll, it wasn't particularly helpful. Those people who responded were skewed as older, people who had the time and took the time to respond to it. So it was skewed in that way as well. So it wasn't a good poll. I agree with Fred that if there's a mechanism to truly develop a good poll question, which is an art in itself, and fairly administer it, and get it out, and get good responses, good percentage of responses, that would be helpful to give guidance, there's no doubt about it.
Thank you, Sid. Anybody else wish to make a comment on this?
Just to follow up on that, Mike Slattery, chairman of the planning commission. Over 100 people did respond. The majority of them were over the age of 55, with very low response from younger people. There was a variety of questions that we still have somewhere, but they were in-depth questions. What did people wanna see? What were the issues? And we didn't get a lot to work with out of it, unfortunately. We had higher hopes for that, but, so we just decided to move on from there. Are you guys still discussing, or are we gonna open the mic up? You still, we're gonna?
I think it's worth, right?
Yeah, we're still.
You're still working?
We're still working on it. But anytime you want, but anytime, but anytime, anything?
I just wanted to say one thing. In that letter, I did mention-
Come on up and talk to the mic, so they can hear.
In that letter, I did mention-
And identify yourself.
I am Fred Miller. I mentioned that the response rate was pretty low, and I did not in any way suggest that the data provided by, by those impromptu polls, that's what they were, they were impromptu. I was writing my letter, and I threw to the polls just to validate, make sure I was on the right track, and make sure I wasn't speaking for, out of line for everybody else. So that, that was the purpose of the polls. But I did not submit that, thinking that, hoping in any way that the data provided by those polls were gonna be considered valid or representative of the whole town. I think your, your poll and my poll points to one, one big, big problem, is reaching the people and getting response, and we need to work on that.
I very much agree with you, Fred, and that's why we've been talking about adding new ways of getting word out, like the newsletter that you sent, and we talked about last week. And that's on the agenda for next week, where I'm gonna present a budget for it and try and get approval from the board. But I agree that we need more ways of getting information out. And I've also created a Facebook page that I post everything that's, link everything that's posted on the website about minutes and about agendas and about information. I wrote about the meeting tonight on that page. I have 60, 70 people on that page so far, and this is who's here. So, but we can keep trying. I agree with that 100 percent.
My thoughts on that whole thing was, the planning board, I did receive one of them survey things a long time ago. And I thought that was way too early to get a good poll, because people didn't know it was gonna be in it.
They didn't what?
People didn't know what was in the town plan at that time. You asked for suggestions or whatever you asked for.
They didn't know it's in the existing town.
That's right. See, now there's been a lot more publicity about it, and I think you could get a lot more accurate poll with the people to see what they want changed or not changed. That's just my opinion.
And I think just for the, if I could just comment on that, just, I think for the record, we've all identified and agreed that neither poll was a scientific poll. Neither one was. It was, this was not following statistical process, you didn't have the, the right questions, and that's true with both of them. I think, Fred, you recognize that, and Sid, you recognize that on the, on the, on the, on the poll that was done earlier, the more, more in-depth poll. I can say as a citizen, I didn't get one in my mailbox or in my email. I didn't go to Village Market to look for one.
We didn't know about email then.
This was a number of years ago.
We didn't have touch-tone phones until the 90s.
Wouldn't it cost a lot of money to have a scientific poll?
State who you are, please.
Meek and Randall. Wouldn't it cost the town a lot of money to have yet another poll, a scientific poll, done by an expert? How much would that cost?
We wouldn't know, we wouldn't know until we ask.
I don't, I don't think there's a proposal for a scientific poll. I think there's just a, a mentioning that we need a better outreach, and this is kind of the proof.
May I, just for a second? I don't think we need any more polls. We have a process in this, and it's called the public hearing process. The planning board went through it twice. You're about to go through it for a second time a couple of months from now. That's the process. You post it, you put it on your website, you encourage people to come out, you record all their answers, you try and get back to every single one of them. What are we arguing about with polls and stuff? This is absolutely ludicrous.
I don't think, I don't think we're arguing, we're having a discussion.
We're not arguing. But that's the process, though.
Yeah, the process.
We have a public hearing.
And that's what we're doing.
For?
And we're doing that, and we're, we're trying to grasp and understand how the public thinks, how the planning board thought when they wrote this, and what information they had to work with. I think, and I think that's where we're at. And we'll, in that process. In the past, to be fair, as you know, I worked on town plans in the past, and what they used to do is the planning board would push it to the select board, the select one would have two hearings, back-to-back nights, and we okayed it. The thing is that the people today are asking for more of a decision-making, which is a good thing, on their part, that they can be involved in this. And I think that's what we're trying to do by having these public hearings, so when somebody does come later on and say something about this, we can certainly say that we opened the process up to the public, they had opportunity to speak to us, they were concerned about polls, and who knows? You know, polls can be worked a lot of ways. I, I was there when you did the first poll, and there was some things in there that looked like there weren't anything there for the young people, and yet at the same time, there was things that was asked on there, that the few that did reply was very encouraged to have those things, you know, bite things and other things.
Motorcycle dirt traps.
Yeah, so, so the bottom line is, we, we had input, I think, from the public, more so, even though we didn't have the Facebook and the other interactions we have today for responding, responding to this. But you, you had the tools you had, you worked with the tools you had, and you produced a plan that we're now talking about.
Got it. Got it. I mean, I have no problem with that at all. I'm just, I don't understand this about additional polls.
If I could chime in a little bit?
We're knee-deep into this thing. We're up to our chest in this thing. More polls? Come to the, come to the public hearings. Right to the select board. That's how you do it.
If I could just, one comment here is that this is substantially, a substantially different town plan than what this town has seen in the past. There are more state requirements than there's ever been in the past. So the process that we've used in the past may not be adequate to get everybody up to speed with what this is. And when you read the vision and the other things in this plan, it is a substantial departure from what we've had previously. So I think it does warrant more, more discussion, more debate. And I would also say, as one of the people who offered a lot of, a lot of feedback, not that it's sour grapes or anything, but, and I, and I understand, you offer feedback-
Well, we're talking about that, too.
You can take it, you could take the feedback or not take the feedback, and that's, that's fine, but the, the material things that I had talked about in the economics and housing section weren't changed, there was some wordsmithing that was done. I'm not saying that my opinion should, should carry the day, but, and maybe it shouldn't, but if the process is that, that we come back to a town plan that's substantially the same as what we started with after getting our feedback, then I think we need a better process.
Okay. I'll come back to that when you guys are done.
Yeah.
Moving on, is it?
Yeah.
Joyce Held. I agree with Nelson.
Jim, it's my question.
Sure.
Thank you.
Joyce Held. I agree with Nelson. We have a-
That's one.
That's one, that's right. I agree. I'm hungry. We have a younger generation that wants to know answers, that wants to get involved, and I say, God bless them. We need to talk about things. We should, we, I think we've all learned, I know I've learned, you don't sit back and say, "They know what they're doing, I'll leave them alone." No, question. And I, I really believe that we can disagree in an agreeable way, and we can say, "I don't understand this, and I wanna know more." And I think our board should say, "We'll give you time to figure it out, we'll even help you to figure it out, we'll explain it to you." I'm also very computer literate, but, don't wanna take another poll, but I feel that the majority, well, I shouldn't say majority, but a large amount of people in Pownell are not. They don't have time to get on their computer, even if they have one, they might do it once a month. They're not on it every day, they don't have their, their texting going on the time. I mean, you know, God forbid, you know, you miss a text. So we, Facebook, media, it's wonderful, but it doesn't reach out to the people who are handicapped by the fact that they don't have communication. That, that's a problem. I don't have an answer for it. I really don't. But putting it out of the stores, I love Jimmy Winchester, but when was the last time he sold me into store? I go down to Stop &amp; Shop, I get my groceries, and I don't stop in Winchester's anymore. Sorry. But, you know, it's not a daily thing, you know? If they run out of bread, they might run over. So putting it up to the market, or putting it at the stores, yeah, maybe you'll reach out to some people, but I don't think you're gonna reach out to the older people.
Do you have an idea of how to reach out to the older people?
No, I'm, I'm-
I would love, I mean, well-
No, I'm not, I'm not giving you, I'm not giving you answers, I'm giving you a problem.
I understand.
I'm throwing it out. But I mean, I know that you're computer literate, and you say, "I'm gonna put up another Facebook page, I'm gonna do this." And that's wonderful for us, who are constantly right-hip attached to it, but for the people who are not, you're missing them.
I totally agree with you.
And you're missing them.
Yeah.
An awful lot. And you've got elderly people who still care a lot about this town and want a say, but they don't know about this tonight. And I drag poor Fred out, because she needs to know. We all need to know. We all need to be part of this. This is our town. I wanna say, I wanna, and my opinion might not be your opinion, my opinion might not be your opinion, but my opinion's important to me.
Okay.
And I'm very open-minded, so, so there's the problem, til I see it. Thank you.
Thank you. Behind, behind you, Jimmy.
Rebecca Dragon. I just had a thought when you said how to reach out to older people. I don't even know if this is possible, or, can you hear me?
We won't be able to on the video. Sorry. Sorry.
Folks, it's not a microphone for sound, it's a microphone for the, for the camera.
Thank you. I would, I don't even know if this is possible, but perhaps reaching out to the local churches, if they could have a community bulletin board in their front foyer, not to discuss it from the pulpit, not to advise in one way or the other, obviously that's a conflict of interest with government and church, but I wonder if you'd be able to, I, I know, I know personally two young pastors that might be open to putting just a community bulletin board in the front, and that might be another place to post things like this, where you're gonna garner the eyes of more older people in the community. Because those are, that's it, for that part.
Thank you.
Do I need to raise my hand?
Yes, go ahead.
Okay. So, and, and just to give everybody some confidence, we do, on the select board, we do recognize that we need to improve our, our outreach, and we're working on different ways to do it. On March 10th, I sent a memo to everybody on the select board to get that process started. Jenny talked about it quite a bit at the last, at the last meeting. I think she came up with some pretty good ideas. So I think, I think this is gonna be addressed on better outreach, and I think, I like the, the church ideas, where do people congregate, where do people get together, and, and how do you reach everybody?
Transfer station. Very much so. Well, I, I think, I think we're trying, I mean, we're open to suggestions, I mean, I don't know what else we can do, if people, a lot of people don't wanna.
Okay. I think we need to come up to Jim Winchester. I've run a store across the street from the trail parks for 39 years. A lot of people don't drive or come to the place, so a lot, a lot of reasons why I posted in my store, so a lot of people don't have a vehicle or need to get places. But what we're really missing the point here is, we all grew up with a reporter, the transcript, the banner, being at meetings. People read. Then we had Helen Renner over the years, we had Mary Bell. We kind of knew what was going on around town. That's disappeared. It's just things we're missing, we've got to stop and say, "Wait a second, what's changed?" It's 2018. Yeah, a lot of things have changed. So slowly, let's give each other the benefit of the doubt, and, you know, it's like addressing the bigger towns around. Well, I happen to think that Pownell is a destination place. And when we talk about Saratoga, the arts places, big staples, I don't know a lot of things about Pownell, but I know where paychecks come from. And they come from the surrounding areas, those towns you're talking about. And I think Pownell's just a great location. Three and a half hours, I watched the racetrack very much, do a lot of surveys. You take the circle, you can go, we're going to Boston, we'll be there in three hours, two and a half hours. Hartford, Saratoga's a great place. Montpelier, Montreal. Pownell is a great place to go places. And I think the town plan guys know this. We try to put talent to Pownell out front, face the places. And when the number one thinks it's a hell of a nice place, and it's a location, location, location.
Back to the board, anything?
Yeah, I'd like to speak to the word nexus, which just means, the definition of nexus is connection, tie, link. I don't believe that the first sentence is suggesting that we're merely a pass-through, and it's all about the towns around us. I think it really speaks to what Mr. Winchester's just said. Because we're a nexus connecting these three states, and we are the center by two and a half, three hours to all of these places, it can also mean we are the center of it. So nexus is merely, means connection. So it's nexus connecting, which is a little redundant, but that's what the word means.
I would just, you know, say, just take that right out, and just say, we have two highways that run through Pownell, that connect those other places. Pownell does not necessarily serve as a connector to anybody. It does not serve. We have the two highways that service Pownell, the town.
You're not getting recorded, but, hold on, hold on a minute. You're not being heard and being recorded by setting their talking. So the people that'll watch this later won't know a thing that you said, unless you come up to the mic, just so you know.
I guess my main point with all that, all that verbiage was, the idea that Pownell serves as a nexus to these other communities, that Pownell, the landscape, the people, the community, the culture serves as a nexus to those other communities. I find that wrong. We have the two highways, we have Route 7 and Route 346 that are the connectors to those other communities. And I think the accurate statement would be to reference the two highways and leave the idea of Pownell serving the other communities in any way out of the equation.
Just to support what Mr. Miller just said, that is the exact word. Pownell serves as a nexus connecting three states. So I agree totally.
Serve can mean serve, serve has many definitions. Serve means I serve you equitably.
I'm not going to make this a language meeting.
But that's what it's becoming.
I'm not, not what I'm going to do, because the board at some point will make a comment and vote on it, on which word, the wordage they wish to use there. And they've heard the arguments, and I think we're not going to get into a grammar contest. What we're going to do is try to move forward on the town plan. Does somebody wish, on the board, wish to start?
I'll start.
Go ahead.
I'm on this side.
Works fine for me.
Okay, so I did want to start with the vision, and the vision I.
Do you have a page or?
Actually, it's section 2.0. And I'm not sure what page that's on.
Page three?
Page three, got it.
So the first paragraph, it's actually six paragraphs. There's really four substantive paragraphs, and there's a three-sentence opener and a one-sentence closer. So there's really four sentences, I thought, with substance, is what I used to say, but I think the first one actually has a little substance also. So I want to address that as well. So the first paragraph of the vision is, "Pownell is primarily a residential community situated in one of the most scenic valleys in Vermont. The natural beauty of Vermont, the community, and the rural lifestyle that characterizes the town are Pownell's greatest assets. Smart economic development strategies will emphasize these assets." So I, you know, in my view, smart economic development strategies will utilize sound, proven economic principles and address the needs of all Pownell residents, which I don't see at least in the vision. I also have some issues with the economics section, but I won't jump ahead. So.
Did you have some wording changes or something you wish to present to the board? Or are you just citing areas that you think should be worded differently?
Right now, I'm citing areas that I think should be worded differently. Sustainable long-term economic, this is from the town plan. "Sustainable long-term economic development in Pownell will take advantage of regional assets such as cultural, educational, employment opportunities in Bennington, eastern New York and Berkshire County, Massachusetts. Additional effort should be made to enhance recreational opportunities and tourism, support and encourage resident-owned businesses, and joining with statewide and regional marketing campaigns promoting and supporting farm and farm-to-table enterprises, and creating a diverse and sustainable tax base that is not dependent on a single large employer or sector. We hope to create an environment where people can be secure as to make their own life choices." It's not that I disagree wholeheartedly with that paragraph, but the statement that we are not dependent on a single large employer or sector, I do take issue with, because you'll never get the second large employer or the third if you're avoiding the first.
It's a statement of fact, though. That's all, it's a statement.
I don't see that it says we're avoiding anything, Bob.
Hold on, one at a time.
It does. It says it's not dependent on a single large employer.
That's merely a statement of fact. We are not presently dependent upon a single large employer. If we could be, it might be great, but I don't think that, going to your eight points, I don't think that's a reasonable likelihood. And there, you and I may disagree about what the prospects for future employment and industry in Pownell is. But I think this statement is unobjectionable because it's a statement of fact.
It's not a statement of fact. It says, "Creating a diverse and sustainable tax base that is not dependent," this was the goal, was to create, it's not a statement of fact, it's a vision for the future. The vision statement is a vision for the future, just by definition. The statement itself says it's a vision for the future. It's not a statement of fact. And if it is a fact, that we don't have a large employer, then that's the status quo. We might need to break the status quo in order to get a large employer.
Let me make a suggestion.
Can I say, because I'm legally blind when you start speaking, can you pick your name?
Oh, sure. I'm sorry, Franny, Bob Jarvis, who just spoke.
Was it Bob?
Hi, Franny, it's good to see you.
Let me make a suggestion, and we might do this, I might not do this, but the suggestion that I would offer at this time, based on the creating diverse and sustainable tax base, I think is where the period should end. And then you can scratch, that is not dependent on a single large employer or sector. That basically doesn't imply that we're depending on it, it doesn't say we're depending on it now. It basically says that we want to create a diverse and sustainable tax base for the town. Period. Is that reasonable?
I make a motion to take the rest of that sentence out, as Nelson has suggested. And end with a period. Creating a diverse and sustainable tax base.
Well, if we're going to go through paragraph by paragraph, we're going to be here until 3 o'clock in the morning.
I was only doing that for the vision, because the vision drives the content of the plan. So I wasn't intending to go through the entire town plan, paragraph by paragraph, just the vision.
But as we talk about something, and if the board is going to make changes, I think at this point, even if we don't vote and move on it, we should come to an agreement, and then at some point, we're going to have this wordsmithed a little bit, and then it'll be put in front of us again, and then we can move on the plan. That's where I'm at.
So you just want it to go down as that, to your suggestion at the moment, not make motions?
Yeah, we don't need a motion. But the suggestion at this point is to basically just say, "Creating a diverse, sustainable tax base." That way, nobody's hounding about large employers or not large employers. It's out of there. You want to make a statement?
I do. Or a question? I was afraid you were going to go through every line of the entire 144 pages. Bob, forgive me.
Just to throw.
Can I ask, first of all?
I have a staff myself.
A question. Who has read the plan from cover to cover?
Right here.
Excellent, excellent. My suggestion for this is, because I thought you were going to go through all this tonight, is to do what we did, to take suggestions, recommendations, after you've read through the plan, make your notes, like Fred did, have another meeting and say, "Here are the five things I'd like to see changed, select board. What do you think?" Rather than this chapter, that chapter, this chapter, that chapter, this chapter. Because, because I just think, we all have a couple of other things to say. I had this vision of staying here until 10 o'clock at night and only being on chapter four.
No.
It's not going to happen, Nelson?
Not going to happen. I also have a number of changes, but I've got by page and what paragraph and so forth. And I'm going to, these are recommendations I handed out to the board, but I'm also going to make it for a statement to the, for the record, of what I feel those changes are. And that's what I'm hoping Bob is doing here.
I'd almost rather see that. I'd rather hear, like a statement that you've written down and say, "Here's the five things I'd like to see changed." That's what I thought this meeting was about tonight. Not to go through line by line and, let's get this, where, you know, talk about wordsmithing, that's what I just heard.
Well, each person has their own way of dressing what they feel should be changes in the plan, and I'm going to try to help Bob not only read what he's reading off, but to try to find words that we can make and modify some of the changes that he's suggesting, because at this point, you don't have, maybe you do in some of it.
I do. On most of it, I do. But to me, the vision, when I read the vision, it speaks for the need for a massive rewrite. It's not wordsmithing. It is a, so I'll just, I'll say.
Well, no, I have no trouble with saying, if you think the vision should be written differently, let's write one and present it to the board.
That's the process. And we have no problem as a planning commission with that either. That's the way it's supposed to be. This is your plan now. Change it however you want. Have all the discussions you want. We certainly have opinions on it, but ultimately, you guys hold the final say as to how you change it. I just didn't want to go through this arduous process when we've had two planning, two public hearings, months of work, months after the public hearings, when people could have come to all of our meetings. Bob did come. For two and a half hours, we worked with Bob, and Bob seemed to be okay. But it wasn't until I saw him running and saying, "The planning commission didn't listen," that was a little bothersome, to be honest with you. So if I'm a little on edge tonight, it's because of that. Please understand.
If I can speak to that.
Well, hold, I'm going to, I don't want to get this into, he said, she said, or whatever, any meeting. This is the select board meeting. We're going to take information, we're going to make some decisions tonight, we're going to present some stuff. And this is one of what I hope to be several meetings. And one of the things we first heard at this meeting was that the public isn't involved, they don't know. That's why we're recording this, so that people can hear what everybody has to say. And I think we, as a board, need to have that happen. And if this is going to be on YouTube, we need to let people know that our media is sensitive or inclined to do that. Have it and listen to it. And it certainly will be the younger generation, I think, that'll do that. And we talked about it earlier, getting the younger people more involved, so.
May I speak?
Yes.
So I actually did do some rearranging of the vision statement that I'm going to hand out to the board to look at. I've moved from the recreation section, I've moved the whole paragraph about outdoor sporting into the vision, and I have moved from the eight points, the paragraph starting, "Pownell has a growing number of home-based businesses," through to "Fit our town's rural character." So this is for the board to take a look at and consider those changes. And Linda, here's my opinion. Thank you.
I think, if I could speak also. So my problem with what we did, and I very much appreciate it sitting there for two and a half hours and keeping everybody late at night, but the end result was some wordsmithing. The end result was not any fundamental changes, and that's a true statement.
I'm sorry, the changes. We recorded them.
No, I have them. And I have them. Mike, I've got them. In fact, how we changed this is in it.
I apologize.
And one of the things, one of the.
I don't want to be here until 10, 12 o'clock either.
I had no intention, I had no intention of going through every paragraph. I was only doing it for the vision, because the vision drives the rest of the content. So I'm going to skip it now and just say that I'll come back with a rewrite of the vision. Okay? And then I'll go on to another section, which is, and just to let you know, I've only got two more, actually, that's not true, I've got another document. I've got three more sections that I'm going to make comments about. Three or four more sections. That's it. I mean, when I say a section, I mean like 3.4.5. Actually, before I get started, I want to recognize Rebecca.
Well, I'll do the recognizing, okay? And at the moment, at the moment, I want you to finish up. Then we'll recognize.
Who's in charge here?
This would be the chair, sitting next to her.
Sometimes I have to.
I'm looking ahead.
I'll take my leg off and bang the table.
Can we also recognize that it's 112 degrees in here?
Yes.
Go ahead, finish. Okay, on, this was one of the things we talked about before. Section 3.2.4 says, "A lack of jobs and affordable housing close to where one works stifles economic growth, increases traffic problems, lowers quality of life. Improving access to affordable housing in Pownell will free up resources for families to provide for basic needs such as food and medical care, improves the lives of its residents. These benefits would then be passed on to the community, revitalizing distressed neighborhoods and promoting economic and social integration while fostering community support. Affordable housing can also save taxpayer money by reducing demand for other government services, including homelessness and health benefits, as well as other social programs." If my memory serves me correctly, this was the paragraph that I referred to as rhetorical flourish and that we agreed to take out. My problems with the paragraph is that it denies, it, there's, it, well, one, there's a couple of problems I have with it. "The action items in the plan nearly all serve as a downward pressure on supply and an upward pressure on cost when it comes to housing." So in my view, the plan as implemented would reduce disposable income, not increase it. It also, there's also inconsistencies throughout the town plan. For example, "A lack of jobs and affordable housing close to where one works stifles economic growth." We've already acknowledged in the town plan somewhere else that most people work in Bennington and Massachusetts and New York, and that fact is not likely to change. So what is it about the town plan that this paragraph doesn't match the other paragraph in that regard? And when we talk about the action items, which are deeper embedded into the town plan, you've got changing of land use requirements, increased minimum lot sizes, forced development in approved areas, Pownell's, a recommendation for Pownell's own residential building codes, all of these things serve to add cost. They might be the right thing to do, but there has to be some recognition in the plan that these things do cost something. These are trade-offs. You can't do these things, you can't enact Pownell-specific residential building codes and lower the cost of housing. That's an upward pressure. You have to recognize that that's an upward pressure on price. In my view, that's my opinion, rather than saying, "If you enact these things, we're going to lower the cost of housing, we're going to make housing more affordable, and we're going to increase your paycheck." Those things just aren't true. So my recommendation is to take that paragraph out. I think that section should be the HUD definition of affordable housing, and just leave it at that. And I thought that's what we agreed.
This is what, the paragraph that begins with "A lack of jobs and affordable housing"?
Yes, that's the one.
You're talking about that?
I'm talking about just taking that out. I don't think it adds anything, and it's actually a contradiction in some other areas.
Okay, but part of this process, if I understand it correctly, is addressing the housing needs in the community as part of the plan, and where it goes and how it moves. So I guess the question is, someone here is making a statement about what it means to have the problems that we have. Let's face it, there is some quality housing problems in the town. But the real question is, what does this paragraph, what is it trying to tell us and have us do? it moves. So, so I guess the question is, someone here is making a statement about what it means to have the problems that we have. Let's face, there is some quality housing problems in the town. But the real, real question is, is what, what does this paragraph, what is it trying to tell us and have us do? That's the piece of that, that I.
Well, and, and that's kind of where I'm, I'm at, is I don't believe it adds anything to the town plan, other than the, the unrealistic notion that, that increased public spending is gonna save taxpayer dollars, or that adding to housing costs is gonna make housing more affordable, or that actions that restrict supply are gonna make housing more available. That's where I have the issue. That sends the message to somebody reading the town plan that it's doing the opposite of what it's actually doing. And, and maybe some of these action items can be defended, but there has to be some realistic nature of, or realistic discussion of cost versus benefit. And if it's not there, you can't just claim that, that it is there.
But shouldn't the vision talk about improving housing? You know, it says, "Improving access to affordable housing in Pownell would free up resources for families to provide for basic needs such as food and medical care and improves the lives of the residents." That's just a statement that basically says, "If this occur, this is what could happen." I, I understand where, where your, your argument is with "The lack of affordable housing close to where one works stifles economic growth." That, that's, that's said all the way through the state. You know, it's not just Pownell that's making that statement. The state making, is making that statement. But what, what do we want for Pownell? Do we want to have it say that we're trying to improve access to affordable housing in Pownell? You know, are we trying to do that or not?
I guess my, my, then my issue with it is that we say that we're gonna lower taxes. We say we're gonna make housing more available. We say we're gonna make housing.
Nothing beats.
And then our action items are all upward pressure on price, downward pressure on supply, and increased public spending. You can't save the taxpayer money by spending more public dollars. You can't lower the cost of housing by adding cost. And you can't make housing more available by restricting.
So it says affordable housing can also save. It doesn't say will. Again, it's gonna be about grammar, but I don't, I'd like to know what your, what you would like, why you have a problem with the.
Then my question for the, for the planning commission would be, didn't we agree to take this out? And this, this was the exact paragraph I referred, referred to as rhetorical flourish. Sid, you were the first one that agreed with that. And I, and we agreed to take this out. There were some other.
I have to tell you, I remember agreeing with your characterization of it, because I thought it was very clever. I don't remember what we decided to do.
There's gotta be a YouTube somewhere.
There is.
The other thing is, remember, we agreed to take it out. You made suggestions. The planning commission gets to decide, and they present it to us, and we, as a select board, get to decide. So there's no we, a community member, we deciding with the planning commission to do something. You gave a lot of suggestions, and they took a lot, and they didn't take some.
Well, here's, here's, here's where I'm gonna hold this. At the moment, we have a recommendation to remove it, put it on the list of the things that the board will address.
Okay.
Okay? What else?
That's the way it should be done.
Yes.
Bob, I'm not being a wise guy here, but there were two incorrect versions of the town plan that fell into the wrong hands. What's the date on the very front page of yours?
Of, this is the one that was November 2017, after the, after the.
You need the January 2nd one.
2017.
Because that's when all of the changes were complete. Michael Thatcher has a complete listing of all the changes, Bob, that we made the night that, October 17th, that you joined us. So we could well have made all of those changes. But it doesn't matter if we made them or not. If you want it struck, it's now among.
It's a new.
The select board.
Right.
Okay.
I'll also.
Next.
Okay.
So can, I'm sorry, are we going through all of Bob's things? Or are we going in order, including your suggestions as well?
No, we're gonna go through Bob's, and I'll go through mine, and then you can go through yours. We'll do it quicker if we do it that way. And then jump back and forth and be on the same subject.
Okay.
What was 342, the next one?
Yeah, that was the next one. So 342 is, and that is, I don't have a page number in here.
It's page 15.
But it is section 3.42.2, I think.
It's 15 and 16.
It is. All right. So, and this is addressing the eight requirements for large employers. I have some alternative language. All businesses, so one thing I object to is the eight requirements. I think it sends the wrong message. It sends a message to any large employer that wants to locate in, in Pownell. And I'm gonna say it again. I'm, this is Bob Jarvis, just for Franny's benefit. Sure. I think the eight, having those eight requirements, I don't think, one, is they don't apply to anything but large employers. If you're gonna have eight requirements, why wouldn't they apply to all types of businesses? I don't think it would be okay for farms or artists to pollute our rivers either. And I think it sends the wrong message. It says, "If you're a large employer, you've gotta jump these hurdles." And, and so my alternative, proposed alternative languages, language is, "All businesses will adhere to local and state regulations regarding environmental protections, zoning, wages, building codes, and energy consumption," instead of having, listing them out and, and there's even, I mean, "And pay a living wage" was one of the ones I was particularly disturbed by, because that's the exact language that is used to justify minimum wage laws. Therefore, it sends a message that you, we, we could be thinking about our own minimum wage law, which would be an economy and job killer. So, so that, that's my justification for it. So I have the proposed language.
Okay, so you're basically asking to strike all the 1 through 8 items, and you had some wording you wanted to add?
Yeah, so everything from "if Pownell does receive an opportunity," all the way through these eight items, and replace it with, "All businesses will adhere to local and state regulations regarding environmental protections, zoning, wages, building codes, and energy consumption."
Okay, but you're also striking the paragraph?
I am. It's this one, all the way through the eight requirements.
Okay. Have you got that, Linda? Page 16?
And then we'll make the recommendation.
Yeah, 16, and he's asking to strike from where it says, "If Pownell does receive opportunity," all the way through the number eight items. Okay? Was there anything else on those pages?
Uh, nothing else on that page.
Okay, what else?
Uh, one more item is 3.4.5.
Page 18.
Okay, and I believe this is still in there.
Which section?
It's, it's 3.4.5. So, oh, I guess it did change. Sorry. Oh, wait, we've got, we've probably got a numbering problem. There's two 3.4.5s. Yeah, the second 3.4, the second 3.4.5 is the village's designation. I think, as we were talking about that before, hopefully, this is, this is acceptable. But the first paragraph is fine, I think. It's the, "Pownell currently has three distinct village center zones, Pownell North, Pownell, et cetera." I won't read the whole thing. And then it's the, the second paragraph, or the second part of that, is the Pownell Planning Commission, "The Pownell Planning Commission recommends that Pownell Village, the village near the junction of Route 7 and 346, be given preference for designation of her development of the village, of the principal village center of the town, as it invests in public infrastructure." Since the first paragraph already talks about all three designations and opening them up for grants and other, and the benefits of it, I'm not sure why we're doing the second one. Because the second one is, a lot of people disagree. A lot of people believe Pownell Center should be.
I'm sorry, can you just say you disagree versus speaking for anyone else? Sorry. I'm gonna have to say that. A lot of people disagree is an opinion. You need to just speak your opinion.
I just assumed, because I was sitting here.
I wish I'd light on that, by the way, and I did this before. It's because of the sewer.
No, I, I know.
It's in that area. It's why we emphasize that area.
Oh, sewer and water.
And water. That's right.
Poison water.
Doesn't mean you take the other two any less seriously.
Yeah, at this point, yeah.
But we're not taking any one less serious than the other. And the first paragraph covers the, the grants and the designation that we need. Why have the disagreement at all? Why not, why not have the three designations?
Well, we're asking for three design, we're gonna apply for three designations. And there's not gonna be any bearing that this town plan has on those three designations. I mean, as soon as we get a town plan, we're gonna apply for all three. I mean, the paperwork is started on it. So, so we're not, the only differentiation in this, a vision for Pownell here, in this section, is the fact that there's sewer and water. So if there has to be preferential treatment to one or the other, that's gonna be the one we're gonna concentrate on. It's also closest to the industrial zones and the commercial zones that could be used for larger employers as well. Those grants can attract larger employers. So just to clarify.
And I guess.
So you're recommending to strike the last paragraph on that?
I am. If all three are already there, then why not have the discussion about what grants and what else we need to do when we get to that point?
Last paragraph. Okay, you got that?
Um, and, I hope everybody's listening, this is my last bit of feedback.
Which one?
It's, it's still 3.0, it might be the one just before it. 3.4.5.
Okay.
And let me make sure that.
The farming one?
Yes.
Farming?
Geological history.
That's still page 18.
Yep.
Yeah, so, okay, that's good. So, and the only part of this that I disagree with is, "The opportunities for institutional support for these values exist in the local school system, where cafeterias could use locally grown produce, meats, and other food products as much as possible in providing healthy meals to students." It's just the suggestion that we're actually using school funds to support local businesses that I, I find objectionable. I did make that comment before, and I know that it was, it's still in. I, I didn't quite understand, when I made, raised the comment, just of, of how this doesn't, my question was, how does this not imply that we're, that we're mandating the use of school funds to help farms? The answer was to read it, the, hey, hey. The answer, the answer was to read the, was to read the statement again. There was no additional discussion on it. You just said that that's not what it says. I think it does say that. When it says, "Opportunities for institutional support for these values exist in the local school system," I would hope and pray, and I would think, that farms would compete for those contracts and get them, because they're local. They should be able to provide stuff cheaper and, and better stuff. But that ought to be a, a decision that the school makes, not written into our town plan, because I think this suggests a misuse of school funds. That's my only comment.
Do you, are you suggesting it be stricken? Are you suggesting it should be worded differently, where local businesses in our town and educational institutions should, you know, should look to support state of town efforts or something?
Opportunities exist for, I, the only thing I could think of is to throw the word, for them to compete for that contract, rather than, rather than, rather than say that it's institutional support. Because it shouldn't be institutional support. I'll reword it.
You'll reword it, and then bring it to the board.
I'll wordsmith it.
Okay.
This is a.
Bob will work on the wording for that one, and then bring it to the board. Okay?
In a monumental moment, I'm done.
Okay.
But there's 150.
I think we had, we had, oh, hey, Nelson, we have.
Yes.
Since we've already talked for years, I'm coming slowly, sorry.
Identify and at the mic. You can do it.
Sorry, I have a barn mucking injury. So, first of all, I want to say I have a lot of respect for everybody in this room. And I think it's like, at 45 years old, that I'm the resident youth in here feels a little, except for him. You know, I wish more people were here.
He's a non-resident.
You're much younger than me. And, but I just want to say that I promise that if you say something that I disagree with, I am not going to sigh, roll my eyes, or laugh behind your back. I just really hope that we can, we, guys, we need to get along in this town, and we need to be able to have these conversations. They're really, really, really important. We, we don't need to deride each other. We really don't. Okay? So, with that in mind, Fred Miller and I, the infamous Fred Miller and I got together, we were very, very inspired by the Middletown Springs Town Plan. It's really, it has a very interesting format for its, actually doesn't have a vision. They've organized it in a really different way, which was really, really, really interesting. And so we wrote a proposed, or just for, to take ideas from, reorganization of that vision statement. And I brought a copy for everyone. May I approach the bench? Thanks. Well, here, you can pass them down. And I have extras as well for the planning commission members, if you're interested in looking at it. But first, I have just a small little thing. If charts in this town plan are being used in any way to do any kind of assumptive decision-making on the back end of it with bylaws, et cetera, et cetera, then I think that the information in those charts just needs to be really, really on point. And I just found one chart that I had kind of a question about or an issue with. And that one is regarding educational attainment for Pownell. On the following educational graph, it shows Pownell is significantly less educated and degreed than state and national averages. However, this does not include a percentage of people who have received training in the trades. And I feel that this graph can create false assumptions, like the reason people are poor or lack of employment is due to lack of education as opposed to lack of opportunity. And so where percentage of education in the skilled trades is not included, if that statistic were to be included, we may find a new conclusion that one of Pownell's best assets is actually a large percentage of people who have training and education in very needed skills such as construction, contracting, accounting, et cetera, et cetera, et cetera. I just think it'd be really, I didn't have enough time to really look and see if that stat, that statistic exists. I think it'd be really interesting to add into the educational attainment section. The second part, "The Middletown Springs Town Plan organizes its beginning," it really defines its town just based on the town, not in comparison to surrounding towns. And it has its own separate section for surrounding areas, which I thought was brilliant. So they really, instead of having the vision, what they had was an introduction, and then a past, a present, and a future. And I thought this was a really great way to try and define Pownell. We've written something up, and I'm just gonna read to you the introduction. The rest, I will not read to you. I will not bore you with my four pages. But the introduction says, that Fred and I worked on together, "Pownell, Vermont is a rural town with a rich history spanning centuries. It has a particular culture of independence that has shaped the Pownell that we live in today. A wide diversity of people have called Pownell home, coming from all socioeconomic groups, political alliances, religious backgrounds, and professions. New and multi-generational residents have coexisted here and in the spirit of tolerance, have worked together to protect and contribute to the social fabric of Pownell. Part of this rich history includes industrial installations, which offered ample employment to our citizens. This industrial history was an integral part of a thriving economic ecosystem, which was interdependent on tradesmen, restaurants, artists, small farms, small businesses, corner markets, community events, churches, social organizations, a growing elementary school, community dances and dinners, and logging and earth product businesses. These longstanding traditions and facets of our community still make up the backbone and heartbeat of Pownell today. This town is still alive with positive relationships and a unique local culture, which stand upon the foundation of this history." The town of Pownell, and this was taken right out of the Middletown Springs, the way they worded their town plan, and we thought it was really brilliant. "The town of Pownell wants to encourage active citizen input in all aspects of civic life, insofar as it does not impinge upon our most important asset, the community and individual right to self-determination and ability to live in freedom. It is the purpose of the town plan to preserve the town as it is today with its traditions and history, as it moves through carefully thought-out change, looking to the future. This plan should reflect the wishes and vision of our citizenry, not the vision of local government, regional, state, and/or federal entities. To survive as a rural agrarian town with its many benefits, it is important to continue the process of sound planning. The people's voice and vote provide direction. Citizen input is a critical component of effective community planning, and the planning process needs to not only engage the public, but also develop a plan responsive to their unique visions. The ongoing task of the Pownell Planning Commission is to follow the direction of the citizenry by proposing appropriate amendments to this plan, and by facilitating continued discussion of topics where broad consensus does not currently exist. Above all else, the town plan and the planning commission should take the role of protecting our natural, personal, financial, human, and historical resources. Any forward-moving changes that incur Pownell should be supported by a majority consensus of our population through legal referendum and an open and transparent democratic process." So that's just something we worked on. I will give you this copy, right? And if, I don't know if Fred wants to add, because we worked on that together. So that's all I have. Thanks.
Fred, any statement?
Yeah, I just want, I want to talk, I want, I want to talk about the town that is being, being built by, by the town of the past. And I, I've been here a long time. Been here my whole life, and it's been a long life. It's been a good life. I enjoy, I've enjoyed, I didn't want, I've never wanted to live anywhere else but in Pownell. And I wrote, wrote a little bit of my reflections on the past of Pownell, as I know, what I know about it and what I experienced. And it goes like, "The town of Pownell, Vermont, as it exists today, is the result of a long past of human aspiration and struggle that included people from all socioeconomic backgrounds working together. Beginning in the early 1720s, when Dutch settlers came to Pownell and built modest homes and farmed the fertile lands along the Housick River, generations of hard-working and hard-playing people have called Pownell their home. Many have come to Pownell intending to stay just for a while, but decided to stay for good, often at the expense of higher prosperity and lesser travail. For them, as it is for many today, the sacrifices were deemed worth it, because the reward has been a peace of mind and sense of place that many people in the world do not come close to realizing. Throughout its history, Pownell has been a place envied by some and derided by some, but always a place dear to the hearts of those who have sunk roots here, who understand the town and its purpose. From the original small homesteads and farms to the larger homes and industries that followed, Pownell has weathered many storms and times of expansion and contraction." At no time has Pownell relied upon one large employer or an economy built around one specific type of enterprise. Pownell has always been more than one thing. From its earliest beginnings, it was more than working farms. Pownell was forests for logging, to provide wood for heat and lumber for building. It was soils and minerals for mining, and a river for damming and creating power for grist mills and cotton mills. In the best of times, all enterprises worked together to form a more prosperous town in which hard-working people could provide for their families. The town's most recent prosperous time was during the late 1950s through the 1970s, when Pownell had several large employers or large enterprises, as well as many smaller businesses that sprung up and thrived alongside them. Pownell's factories, the tannery in North Pownell, the worn wire later named General Cable, its large sawmill, Northeast Wood Products in Pownell Village, and the Green Mountain Park Thoroughbred Horse Racing Track, providing livelihoods for many Pownell families. At that time, Pownell also had several gasoline filling stations, dairy farmers who delivered their milk and eggs, auto repair shops, restaurants, bars, corner markets, and specialty retailers, barber shops, salons, a bank branch, motels, boarding houses, cottages for seasonal workers. There were jobs in Pownell for skilled and unskilled laborers, loggers, cooks, farriers, babysitters, waitresses, meat cutters, and tradesmen. During the late 1970s to early 1980s, Pownell's economy started a downturn as a result of the racetrack switching from horses, which took a team of several workers to care for one horse, to dog racing. By contrast, it took one person to tend to several dogs. Coincidentally, the General Cable Manufacturing Facility closed in the late 1980s, and the tannery followed in the 1990s. When the horse racing enterprise ended, many of the local supports also took a downturn. Farms sold less hay and feed for the animals, and restaurants, stores, motels realized a decrease in business. Sadly, other businesses like the boarding houses were simply regulated away. One of the last holdouts, the sawmill, closed in the late 2000s, and the property was auctioned off in 2009. I'll go on to describe the present, people that live here, and we'll go on to the future.
Yeah, we have that to read.
Yes.
Thank you.
Okay. Go ahead. I'm sorry. The only I wanted to add was they also... If they didn't say it, I don't remember it. There's also a section here on surrounding areas. So, I think that's, to me, a lot of the stuff that I read in the vision should really be in the surrounding area. Should be in the surrounding area. The proposed extra section is surrounding area.
Were there extras that they can have? I had 10.
There's some right here.
Okay. Thank you.
Those are extra.
Okay. Any of the other board members have anything written that they wish to propose at this time in relation to the plan?
Yeah, well, I handed out the thing where I gave out my suggestion for the new vision.
Okay, yes. Anything else?
I'm going to read that. I'm going to also say that we should go ahead and strike the eight criteria.
Okay. That was suggested earlier.
Yeah, I'm just repeating the suggestion. I'm agreeing with the suggestion. And then, I mean, these are things that... Oh, I just wanted to point out that some of the things have already happened. Page 20. I'm Jenny, the only female voice here. On page 20, number six, I don't know if it needs to be in here because it's already happening or if it... Because it's talking about assess the proposal to hire a full-time town administrator. So, I don't know if that needs to be in anymore, or should it stay in because it hasn't been completed yet? Just a question.
Yep, okay.
And another one was page 22, under actions, number five. Assess the viability of proposed to create innovative promotional materials, including development and regular updating of a town website. That's already happened, so I don't know if it needs to stay in. Just a question. Maybe it needs to stay because...
You're on page 22, number five?
Correct. And I'm saying that out loud to remind the public there is a website and...
Number five says, "Assess the viability of developing a tourist information center along Route 7." Does your say something different?
Yep. With public restroom facilities. Assess the viability of a proposal to create innovative promotional materials.
She's just talking about the section.
And just that one. Including development and regular updating of a town website. If anyone doesn't know, we have a town website. It's townofpownell.org, and it is updated regularly. So, I'm taking the opportunity to remind the public of that, and I don't... So, I don't know if the sentence is necessary, or do we just keep it in because it's pointing it out that we have it?
I think that Linda will make note of it, then we can move either to strike it or leave it, whatever we choose as a board.
Yeah, so I just wanted to point that out.
Okay. Anything else?
Those are the main ones that I had this time.
Another one.
I mean, that's... Other stuff is just discussion.
Did you have anything, Jason? I don't. Ronnie, any?
No. I'm sorry. I did forget one other thing.
You want Bob to make a statement?
I swear, it's an easy one. It's an easy one. Actually, I may not have forgot it. The housing and economics section. Did I say that the economics should come first? It should come first because that's the primary need of Pownell.
Before the sidewalks and everything else.
Before the... No, no, no. In the town plan, I think the priority of the town was, in my estimation, and actually, it says so in the racetrack section, that the number one priority for Pownell residents is economic opportunity. When jobs leave an area, over time, housing deteriorates and people leave. So, those are symptoms of the problem. The problem is a lack of economic opportunity. So, I think that should come first.
Yep. I'm fine with that. Okay. You all set, Bob?
Yes, I'm done.
Ronnie?
Well, I heard that something about a visiting center or something. These things cost a lot of money. It's fine if you got it on a state highway, and you got the state help to pay for it. But as far as having a... You know, if you really want to put up a billboard somewhere or something, fine. But as far as facilities, whatever, anyway, it's unreasonable. We're a town that hardly can afford to pay our taxes now. It costs money to put that stuff up and heat it and take care of it. It's like other issues that we deal with, like dog kennels and things like that. There's no money for that stuff, folks. Venetian don't even have something like that. The reason their welcome center is up there is because they put the new highway in. That's the only reason. I don't think Venetian supports that. What I'm trying to say is, we can't... All we're talking about is spending money. I'm more interested in how the town could move forward with making money. You know, encouraging people to have businesses and what have you. That's, you know... We're our bedroom community now, which is fine. We've got a lot of people that got some high-priced properties. That's the only thing that's keeping the town alive. That's the only thing. Other than that, there's nothing else. So...
Can I clarify that? The planning commission. We weren't talking about a grand scale. We're talking about something small. Newport, Vermont, right at the base of Lake Memphamogog, has a small... I'm trying to think of a building, maybe eight foot wide, 10 foot deep, little slanted roof, manned in the summer and the fall by a volunteer to hand out brochures and give people directions to Winchesters, where you can get a sandwich, things like that. I'm talking about a grand-scale thing. We weren't in that when we came up with that. We are the gateway. People are coming across. If they have a reason to stop and they see a small visitor center, they may stop and ask some questions about the area, where the bike paths, where's this, where's that? Here's a map. That was our basis, not to spend a lot of money on it.
Okay. Well, like I said, I'll reiterate it, I guess. Over there at the State Forest, they got a nice thing. It's right at the entrance to the State Forest. It's got all the information on there, what can go in there, what can't go in there. I've a... Boyd Oaks Road. As far as I'm concerned, if you got an interest or something, that's fine.
Yeah, I just wanted to clarify where the planning commission came up.
Yeah.
Could I suggest to...
You all set, Ron?
Yeah, I'm all set.
I'll take a stab at some wording. I think if we threw in something like small, volunteer, inexpensive...
What page?
And that's on page 22. It's the same number. It's number five, except it's requesting... It's talking... It's the first sentence.
Assess the viability.
Yeah. Assess the viability of developing a small, inexpensive, volunteer-manned kiosk. That would be... That's a good way to put it.
Well, so, I have a question about that. What it says is assess the viability. So, it doesn't say do it. So, it's just saying in the plan that it's something we eventually discuss and assess. It doesn't say... So, I don't know... I don't disagree with you. I just don't know if it needs to be that specific in this one. Is that the one you're talking about, Ronnie? Number five, assess the viability?
Yeah. I would just point out... I'm sorry. Wait. I'm not used to this process.
I think we went to assess the viability because we couldn't agree on that as a clear part of the vision among the planning commission. So, we're to assess the viability of it.
Okay. The board will... They've had several suggestions on what to do with it. The board will look at it, and it'll make a decision.
Perfect.
In the future. We're not going to debate it and decide just what the wording is tonight. Okay. Did you have anything else? No?
No, I'd love to go through yours.
Ronnie, so we're back to mine. Okay. Okay, I didn't bring any extras, I don't think.
Do you need one?
Well, I've got mine. I just wanted, in case we can hand one out. You've got one, right, Linda?
Send it to us by email.
I can do that.
There's an extra one right here.
Okay. Linda needs one, for sure.
I can do that, Sid. Do you?
Find it right now?
No, read it. And...
Okay. Page two of the plan. And where the bullet section is in the bottom, there was the one that says, "Protecting all natural environment and abundant natural resources at all costs." I thought we should strike at all costs. Okay? That's where I'm at with that. I had no trouble with the fact of protecting the environment and abundant natural resources. I had trouble with it at all costs, no matter what, we need to do this. You know, if we have to burn down a person's house to protect it, we're going to do it. No, that's not what we're after. Okay, that's that one. Page three. I basically said, "Maybe a short paragraph..." I know you worked on this section, so maybe it's over. But I... "Maybe a short paragraph about how Pownell is meeting the need of green energy with having several large solar fields and numerous homes with solar, along with the old Tanmi Hydro Power Plant coming online." That was to do with the energy part, and I had that on page three. And I'm just reading about all the stuff you had, and I thought you should do... And we could do something and get back to you, but I just thought we ought to... And until I see your energy section, maybe you've already addressed all that and talked about it. I just don't know.
A lot of detail, and that's about to change.
Yeah. Because somewhere in here, you should let people know that Pownell is doing their part in green energy. Okay. Page eight, paragraph, beginning with, "Pownell existing infrastructure."
So, underneath the...
3.2.1.
Yeah, it's underneath... Yeah. It's underneath the chart that shows the different number, family size, in Pownell. Where it says, "Surrounding this central valley, slopes increase quickly outside the village areas..." Let me find where that says that. Hooked at the last sentence. "Should note that although there are several areas within the village areas outside the flood areas that could support housing development at this time, along with funding and the willingness to invest in this has not yet been shown in here." So, somewhere...
Surrounding the central valley, slopes increase quickly.
Yeah, I want to find just where.
Slides increase quickly into the Green Mountains and Teconic Range. Do you have an old one?
That's what I've got. Making development of roads and housing extremely difficult.
Oh, you want it to say outside village areas.
Yeah, I wanted to make it... I want to make it clear that even though you're saying housing is different and difficult here, there should be something that also states that there is housing space available in our community. Otherwise, people will look at your town, "Oh, there's no place to build here." We should somehow state that there is places to build. That was where I was coming from. Okay.
So, something like surrounding the valley.
Yeah. I just jotted down that I was kind of concerned that we were telling there was nothing when we should... And then go on to housing trends and the rest. Then, in the 3.2.2, housing trends, historically, much. I said, "It should note that there has been an expansion five within the village, although nominal, and the town should find ways for future development within and around the village areas to support settlements." Let me see where I got that in there. I should have highlighted my book. See where that is. There's still continued expansion of housing outside the village. Let's see. In the village... I wanted to make sure that expansion should be, as you've got in one place in this bylaw, that expansion should be in the village areas as much as we can do that. But at the same time, we're going to allow expansion outside. That was the main thing I was looking at. Along with funding, the willingness to invest has not yet been shown. Okay. Is that where I'm at? Beginning historical? Or did I just...
Yeah.
Page nine. Should have something. I don't know. Page nine, first paragraph... Oh, I don't have the right page on this stuff.
First paragraph, last... Oh, that's what I have, too. Oh, yeah, you have to. Top, it's the top, eventually. That's where you are.
Yeah, page nine.
Eventually, such units... Here's your...
Yeah. First paragraph, where it says, "Eventually, such units become public safety hazards." What I had suggested was that such units might become public safety hazards. Here, it's implying that they always will. First paragraph, last sentence, on page nine.
The paragraph that's continued from page eight starts before 1970.
Eventually, such units become public safety hazards. And what I'm saying, it should have the word might, you know, or could become. It shouldn't just imply that all of them are going to be.
I mean, I would agree with that, except it's talking about asbestos and lead paint and everything on the prior page. And so, it's kind of the way it flows in. I'm sorry.
But it's talking about houses before 1978 and other things. I have a house that was built before 1978 that went through a fire and was completely gutted and completely redone and inspected by the state. It is not... Eventually, such units will become a hazardous site. It certainly isn't with the state approval. So, I'm trying to make sure that people understand, because of the dates and what you're saying, it doesn't necessarily mean that that unit is a hazard to the town or a hazard to a person, because I have to provide information to my tenants anyways. That's why I used the word... And could is fine with me, too, or might. Either one of those things should be there. Last paragraph, starting with, "Improving access to jobs." Oh, that's paragraph. Well, that's the one you struck, so I'm not going to worry too much about affordable[1763.61] much about affordable housing and jobs and so forth.
Well, that's the one he wants to strike. What is, you want to say?
With improving access to jobs and affordable housing. I had put in jobs and affordable housing together. So, proving access to...
Housing and, just say, improving access to affordable housing and jobs?
Yes. I thought jobs should also be in there. But, okay. And I basically said we should not marginalize the need for jobs by not mentioning it in the need for improvement in this paragraph. That's the reason why I said, added jobs to it, because jobs are just as important in our town at the moment as there is the housing. We don't have them, we need them. Okay. Page 10, goal one. My numbering was bad.
You mean goal 11, and just concerning...
What does this mean? And is compatible with the character of the community was something I saw. Goal. I'm wondering if I looked, worked on the wrong thing. Because I did this online and then I didn't do it in this book. So... What does it say on page 10 on there?
I'm looking for it.
Page 11.
It said page 11.
Hasn't goal one, and is compatible.
Page 11.
It's page 11?
Yeah, yeah, yeah. Page 11, Pono Housing, Goal One.
Okay. My mistake, guys. Okay, and let's see where I went with this. The very last sentence, where it said, "It is compatible with the character of the community," comma, and that's what it said. I, what does this mean? This was my concern. We keep using the word character all through this thing, and people in their mindset think differently about character. You know, the whole town is made up of characters, you know? So how do we try to describe an area as a character? That's, that's the piece that I guess I'm having trouble with. So it's got to be a different word.
I think Fred described it very well. Character, huh?
Yeah, so we...
She read it.
But we, we, we just need to think about that, because it's used throughout here, and I've actually used it a couple of times. I've struck some of that. The same went on page 15. I was concerned with disrespect our lifestyles and choices and fit our town character. I just, those, those sort of things sort of jumped out on me, and that was on page 15, that one was. So those were the sort of things when I read through here, last paragraph. Pono recognized benefits.
It's the very bottom of the page.
It's right at the top of 16, continues from bottom of 15 on the six.
Pono recognizes the benefits of large employers.
Yeah.
And it's the bottom. Hence, Pono will be welcome to businesses that respect our lifestyle choices and fit our town character.
Yeah, and I just, I just struck that, to respect our lifestyle choices and fit our town character. I just, Pono will welcome new business. That's where we're at. When you do your bylaws, you'll put conditions, I assume, on what this business will have to meet and so forth, which, which...
Oh, so that, that's the paragraph that I proposed moving to the vision statement, and changed it to fit our town's rural character. But not necess, I get what you're saying.
I'm just, I just, nope.
It's, it's a subjective word.
That's right. Yes. All right, page 16, first paragraph, possible, in terms of environment and town character, again, it was the character issue. Possible costs. I think I'm a page off.
You're still on 16.
No, you're right. Second paragraph, strike it, and one through eight. That's where you are.
Okay. Oh, yeah, strike the others. Yeah, you guys were looking to strike them all. Okay. First sentence, strike over above. Third paragraph.
First one, strike.
One through eight, and then the third paragraph, which is this here.
Oh, so you're saying over through.
Over and above.
So he, so what he's, the economic development that emphasizes sustainability through characteristics listed above?
Yeah. Yeah, if they're not there, you got to strike it.
And maybe, maybe my proposed wording, I should have said, goes all the way down to here.
Okay, so you're, the whole...
Yeah, that's...
Because otherwise it keeps referring to...
Right.
Okay. And there was something to do, does the town care about 2012? Williams College Center for Environmental Studies. They did a study, and it's cited in here to do with the racetrack, and it's basically a study that people can go and look up and so forth. So my concern was, who knows what's going to be proposed at this site in the future. I just recommend that we strike the 2012 section. If we're going to say something about the racetrack.
Just start with Pono residents are most concerned with job creation?
Yeah, something, something that...
Take out according to this study.
Yeah, you know, versus every line, here's what we saw and so forth. We already know that flood hazard and other things aren't allowed in this simply by the bylaws. Doesn't need to be stated in the town plan. What we're really looking for is, what do, what do we want this place, you know, is the vision for this place at some point, I'm going to talk about zones in a minute too. In fact, I haven't talked about it now. They're changing the zone a little bit here in this town plan also. And if we look at industrial, the only place that we have industrial currently is the Mac Molding Building and the Tanami Warehouse. But yet we have an industry down there by TAM that isn't declared as an industrial zone at all. And I think if anything, the racetrack and that area probably should be industrial or commercial slash industrial. That's my thought on that zone. So it can be either or, because that's really where your industry is. It's about the only place you got where industry can actually build. The rest are already there, where you're saying industry. So I would recommend that that zone be that way. In that case, when you're looking at these studies and stuff, then you can find out, you know, if we get a chair manufacturer or somebody that wants to build something, what are we going to tell them they can do it in town? At the moment, you know, we got a railroad down there, we're going to have a siding down there by the sound of the future. There's, there's potential for that site that we should try to build on. That's where I'm at. So... But that, that should be noted also, that the zones, we need to look at the zones.
I'm not sure where you are.
I don't either.
Zones are these maps.
Oh, oh, oh.
Okay, and we talked about zones. And if you look at the zones on the map, and you look at what they've drawn up as new sites, industrial is strictly Mac Molding and our warehouse. And I'm recommending that it should be more than that, because of TAM and others.
I agree with you on that. I'm just wondering why, if you have its own commercial now, not industrial, why wouldn't that accommodate a new industry going in there? Which then, to the rest of your question, why do we need industrial at all? I mean, I'm aware of what each one's definition is in our bylaws.
The key is, is that we can pull up the word of what industrial means, and then you can move up what commercial means. Commercial to me more is more like a retail and a type of selling and so forth, where manufacturing to me is more industrial.
Right. And I, I think if you look at the wording, it'll accommodate both under commercial, but you want heavy industrial to be on its own. I think that's what you're saying.
Yeah, I don't want it in the middle, I don't want somebody to come in and say, okay, we have this polluted water space down here, let's expand this industrial zone until it gets all the way up into all the homes. Let's look at an area that's on the outside of it a little bit, and let's do it a little different. Unless there's another site that you think in town is appropriate to build an industrial park. You know, and that's, and that's what I'm looking at, is you might have, you know, BCIC tried to do this for years to try to find a way, when they were working with the track, people said, maybe they have a small industrial park there for startup businesses to use some of that facility. But we never really had it accommodating that, because we never zoned it right. And I think we should. It's just, that's just where I come from.
Where?
I'm talking about the racetrack, 150 acres. TM, all the way down through to the other end of the racetrack.
So you're thinking that we should make the track industrial? I think that's what we indicated, wasn't it?
No.
We're commercial. But what we didn't want was, we didn't make it, so either or, I'm with you on that. We're almost splitting hairs on that, but we didn't want residential in there. We didn't want apartments.
I'm not saying residential, because of flood zone. I don't think it's...
So we figured either one of those would knock it out.
Yeah, okay.
Got it.
But that's what I'm looking at.
Got it.
And that's just, before I forget it, because I didn't have it on my sheet typed up, but I thought of it, and wrote zone on the front page. Okay, guys. Now that I've mixed you up, where am I at?
18.
Page 18. You have a paragraph that reads, "Most active church," and I think it should be one of the most active churches, because the church down in North Pono, whoever heard that, you only said this other one was the most active in town, would be a little upset with you, because they have all kinds of activities that go on there, all the time.
They're trying to start a fight here.
Well, we're trying to get the churches to explain and post things about our town plans. I don't want them to be fighting this.
Where is that? Oh, it's this, there's, that's where we have the two, 3.4.5s.
Yeah. You find it, did you?
No.
3.4.5. It was just a sentence, but at the start of the paragraph where it reads, "Most active church." So somewhere in here it does that, so.
Yeah, right that one.
Yeah.
I, I don't have any trouble with saying, you know, that one of the most active churches. That's fine with me. Okay, 18, moving on. As you can tell, I read this thing. I just don't know what page I'm on when I'm giving you the changes I'm recommending. Okay. Action 18 months, page 19.
19, number one, I think. Action's 18 months. Oh, number two?
All right, here, action, 18 months. Within 18 months of the plan adoption, create an economic development committee comprised of select one members, planning commissions, and so forth, was the number one. Number two was conduct needs assessment, ask the study, SWAT analysis. Now, everybody might not know that that's strengths, weaknesses, opportunities, and threats. So if you're going to do that, let's try to...
Spell it out.
Let's tell people what it is. Some people might think that's, they're going to get swatted or something.
Swatted.
Maybe they're going to get brushed off the table. I don't know. But, but that was one of them. And page 20. Again, under actions there, you go down to actions two. It was to do with town's character. I'm, again, I'm, is, I'm worried, is use, which I think is loaded issue, I spayed it, spoke earlier, I got it written here, the same thing. But basically, it says, "Character," to me, we need to find another word for some of these spots. That's all. I didn't say to strike it or any of that. I'm just saying, let's, let's broaden it somehow. Page 32, and there is an into this, guys.
What about protecting the integrity of the town?
Where are you?
Your, the char, that one, character?
Yeah, someone that I talked about earlier, when they were talking about character. So even if it's this page, I'm talking about character throughout the book.
Yeah.
So we need to just look at it, how it's used and what it means. Okay. First paragraph, eight, last sentence, these structures, I guess is what I'm looking at. Probably primary concentrated areas in North Pono and Pono Center. North, oh, it's not Pono Center you want there. What you're talking about is structures, primary concentrated areas in North Pono. And if you look at what you're doing with the reading before that, I think you really meant, with the thing that I changed here, took the center off in Pono, north of the racetrack, because you say Pono Center, north of the racetrack?
I agree, that's a mistake.
That should just be struck, right?
Yep.
Okay, because I caught that one.
That's just Pono.
Yeah, that's what, that's why I...
Not south of Pono or whatever.
Yeah, I said Pono Center, north of the racetrack. Well, that's quite a ways north. So I thought you meant something a little...
It's the river behind Francis's house.
Okay. So basically, going on to page 44. Again, it was under actions. 44, I'll get there in a minute. Actions, and it was number two?
Oh, it's a typo.
Where was I?
It's amend the bylaws, should to require.
Yeah, strike two, right.
Jim Winchester's got to prove for you this.
Can we strike the right one?
Yeah, right here, it's the one they're talking about, this one. Mend the bylaws should require mitigation, it should, it says should to require, should require mitigation, including creation of new wetlands or payment. This is standard state regulation.
I'm not just saying it, I'm sure it wasn't should we should take out. Mend the bylaws should require mitigation, including creation. It's still not a sentence. So we need some wordsmithing there.
All right, okay, so, but, but we know which one to look at, okay?
Oh, so we have, so strike should, not to. Amend the bylaws to require.
Yeah, that's what I was saying.
Yeah.
All right, which is fine. Okay, you got that, Linda?
Yeah, you're taking should out.
Yes, versus the two. Okay, page 45. 10.
Page 45.
Yeah, page 45, number 10, and you go down to the, read the first sentence where it says, "Provide no new structures are constructed, no fill and seduce. It should be noted that no new structures are constructed without state and town approval," is what I added. I added the, the "without state and town approval." One of the reasons I did that is farming structures are allowed, and some others by the state. So for us to say that no new structures, construction, fill, or so forth is allowed in this flood hazard area, believe it or not, when you pick up the statutes and read it, they are allowed to build barns in the flood zone, farming is. There's, there's, farming has a whole different set of laws and regulations in the state. So I'm just saying, without state and town approval covers us and the farmer and the rest. That's all. Wasn't changing anything other than just saying, hey, you must get approval. Okay, page 75. Get by all these graphs. Okay. Oh, it just says, you should update the hydro information you have here. Bill Scully will give you a little flyer or something. You can update what it is, because it is producing power and has been producing power now for a while. Okay, and we can either get that and put something in, because he has a flyer he hands out. Linda has most of the information anyways, because he sent us letters on what they're producing and so forth. So we'll, we'll make a little change there in that. There we go. Okay, page 80. Not 10 yet, is it, guys?
You've got another hour.
Okay, page 80, objective two, under one. This should include limiting water and sewer, was what you had on here, which is the last sentence in that. Encourage valid within village, this including encouraging mixed residential and commercial use, so residents can drive less frequently and far. And this should include limiting water and sewer services to village areas to reduce sprawl. I'm not sure what that does to improve that sentence. I think that could be struck. Because really, you want them in the mixed residential where they are, in the village. Okay, moving on. Page 81. Okay, go number four. Strike the last two bullet items. Sites that are highly visible for multiple public vantage points, sites in close proximity residential properties or neighborhoods. Let me see what this is about. Identify suitable areas for wind, solar, biomass, hydroelectric generation, or protecting resources. Okay. And the reason I did that was, this limits the possibility of something that might provide heat to the local area. Example, small biomass for the library, church, and legion in that area. Also possible site for school, town hall, a small biomass, or some other force. Bennington College has a small biomass and it feeds all of its buildings. Mount Peoria has one in its downtown that basically can be seen from anywhere. It provides most, all the buildings up there, the municipal buildings. If it's done properly and the right size, then we should be finding ways to accommodate that, if it's reasonable, to the character in the neighborhood.
Care, care, watch that word.
So that's why, I guess, I just chose to strike the two bottoms, because otherwise, it's saying you can't even think or talk about this. And I think we should be able to think and talk about that, and the DRB, at that point, should be looking at what the requirements are under the bylaws and running it through that type of thing, versus striking it right out from the get-go by saying, "In the town plan, this isn't allowed." That's where I'm at. So those are my recommendations to the board. Okay, now, page eighty-seven. Eighty-seven? Doesn't look like a page to me. Eleven point one. Oh, eleven point one, it is there, at the bottom of the page. The requirements are met. See something like that somewhere? Eleven point one.
Was it that you were trying to say?
The statutes also, yeah, I'm trying to find out what. The requirement is met through the specific policies and recommendations that accompany each individual element of the plan. Words like this for meeting implementation is what I'm, guess where I'm at. I don't know why I worded it that way. My mind must have been going somewhere. I'm towards the end of the book that day, so. But I guess what I'm looking at is, is that we should be looking at ways to state how we're looking to implement, through the implementation process, making this specific policy recommended accompanying each individual element of the plan. And the reason why I say that. Page ninety-one through one-twenty-five should be reworked to be similar to the requirement statement that basically states, this is, instead of having half the book, the implementation, because my feeling is implementation is things you put in your bylaws and so forth. It's not something you put in your town plan. What you should have is a paragraph that states that this will be implemented by the following people, which you have a list of, through the regulations that are put forth through our bylaws and other procedures or policies that the town has passed. That says you're implementing it through that process, and that process, when you write them, whether they be a policy that the town has written in a document that they're hauling, that it has to be followed, or whether it's a bylaw. I'm trying to think of the document I'm talking about. We just did one on large meetings, ordinance. It's an ordinance-type thing. So that's what I see as implementation, is either through ordinances and through bylaws, which are performed and followed by the various people that you list, versus each one of them being broke out as a separate sentence. This is more to me, I'd keep this, because you're going to, when you write your bylaws, you're going to have a section that says, "Make whatever is here, that person's going to do it in that bylaw." So you got part of the work of what you're looking at. And I did ask, I did ask Mike about this.
Mike Batchor.
Batchor about this.
He's a big believer in an implementation chart.
Well, let me tell you what he told me. I asked him. I said, "Can you show me anywhere else in the state where this is done?" And the answer was, "No." It has been done nowhere. It is in no town plans, and I'm printing out a copy of their town, their plan, Bennington County Regional Plan, and it's not in that either. So my saying is, strike it. And find the paragraph and the description that we want to write to describe how those things will be done, without trying to individualize and have an implementation plan that talks subject-by-subject matter on what people should perform, which is what the requirement is for them to do in the bylaws or ordinances, not in this plan. That's my feelings on it. And as you can tell, I feel pretty strong about that.
Yes, you do.
I'll second you strongly.
May I ask that the Planning Commission comes back at the next hearing and speaks to that? Because it's a huge chunk, and I honestly don't really understand what you're saying. So I'd like to hear more information before making any kind of decision.
Yeah, the board, the board, they can come to the board at any time. It's a public meeting. The board will have a couple more meetings, and the board will be meet at those times, and they'll be making the decision on that, at which they're more than willing to speak to. That's where I'm at.
Yeah, I just want to hear, I just want to hear more.
Yeah, I would say call Mike Batchor, get some information. Sid?
I don't want to get out ahead of my fearless leader behind me here.
No, no, go ahead.
I would like to know, I would like to hear what you think is the process that you're going to follow from here on out, how many meetings or hearings you are going to propose. I know you have one in May, I think. And I also want to say, without embarrassment or feeling guilty that we did it that way, there were comments that we, in particular, our vision, was not right for the town. And maybe some wordsmithing would improve it. But we came to this task with a distinct feeling that we should be trying to look to the future. We've all experienced what Windsor, what Windsor, that's where I used to live, but what Pownell used to be and is now, and what did we aspire it to be in the future? And we wanted it to have certain characteristics. We wanted to have certain opportunities. We wanted it to have better housing. We wanted it to have better jobs. And we tried to come to that. And if we didn't express it adequately in our vision to do that, that's our fault. If we didn't inspire the residents of Pownell, or if we won't inspire them when they read this, to look to the future and try to do better, then we won't have done our job either. We're invested in this, this project, not just because we spent a lot of time and money at it, but because we think it's really important for the town. And I'm encouraged that there has been a spirit shown here tonight of accommodation and understanding. I haven't read the town plan from Middletown Springs, but I certainly intend to before the weekend is out. And I think we all ought to cross-fertilize our thinking and our ideas so that we can come up for what's best for the town of Pownell.
I agree. Here, here. I agree wholeheartedly. Okay. And the last thing I had on here was, I didn't think I put a note on here, was to do with zoning, and I addressed it earlier, to do with the district. And I do know that we should be, so people know out there, we did also notice that there were some changes in the commercial areas that you made also to the villages. And I assume that's because they're village zones and they're mixed-use anyways, which allows a lot of the commercial. Because I agree with you, I don't think those strips should be industrial or anything but commercial for what you've got there. Any other comments?
Yeah, I just want to know for process, are we tabling, making any decisions till the next town hall? Or are we going to move forward and make some decisions, implementing some of the stuff people have said, and then take the new version to the next town hall? What's our plan?
Here's the, I don't know about new town hall, that's another.
Well, no, we have one scheduled for May, right? So I'm just.
Let's be fair where we are.
What do I mean? Public hearing, sorry.
Yeah, well, none of these are going to be public hearings. Be fair, even though we say public hearings, but there's a time period that we have to act on this, and I think it's the hundred and twenty days when we're, we either have to, we have to do something.
It's like a week after May, too.
Yeah. So basically, what we're looking at is, I think at least one more of these meetings somewhere before that May meeting, in which we, the board, at that point, have had enough time to think about what we heard tonight and what we're discussing, to come back with some valid changes as a board by vote. And basically, that's where we are. And I do know that the whole board won't always agree, but that's a good thing. We want to have that diversity and move forward with it. So, but that's my thoughts on it. At least one more meeting before the final meeting. At that meeting, I hope to, all the things that we heard tonight, to somehow make some of those changes and get them in there, so we can move forward with that.
On a very practical level, who's going to pull the laboring oar on doing the typing and the editing in a Word document that's going to result in the next? Linda?
I am sure that what will happen, because I think I have it in Word document form, because I took this thing from the PDF that you guys sent me and converted it to Word so I could.
I have it in Word.
Do you also? Well, that might be even better than what I've got, because sometimes, when you do that switch from PDF to Word, it doesn't quite come out right. So if you could email that to me, I am more than willing to take a look at some of these things and send it to Linda to proofread and edit after I've made some comments. And wherever I make those comments, I'll highlight, so at first, certainly she can find it. Yeah, I know, I get track changes, yeah. I'll do that, too, but I like the nice yellow, hit me in the face.
Is Michael Batchor still consulting here?
Yes.
I assume.
He has in both, in both documents.
That's what I was wondering, why aren't we?
Yeah, and if you just get him changes, number one, he'll, he took care of that for us. Number two, he'll also verify, as you make changes on some of this. We made them thinking a lot of the same things that you thought, and he said, "No way, you can't do it." So he'll let you know from a state or statute point of view whether you can or can't do these things. Unfortunately, we do have to play by those rules. You do have between thirty and a hundred and twenty days. You have to make your changes prior to fifteen days before the last public hearing. If in fact, you don't get everything done, it does not invalidate the plan after a hundred and twenty days. They give you that as a reference, try and get that done, and I'll show you the statute, within the statute it says. However, if you go beyond a hundred and twenty days, it does not invalidate the plan, so.
And it doesn't approve it either, though.
The problem, no, it doesn't, you're right. You know, of course, the problem we're having, and I'm sure, you know, the Select Board is aware, the, we're ready to, we're almost ready to apply for village designations. We have no deference at all right now with the Public Utilities Commission, zero. They can do anything they want in any part of our town, whether we like it or not. And that's an issue. That's a big issue. And as most of you know, Act one seventy-four requires that we have to do this section over again, go through the same process of warning it, public hearings, bring it back to the Select Board, and then you have to do exactly what you're doing tonight. I just want to finish by echoing what Sid said. Thank you for the work you're doing on it. This is not what I envisioned tonight. I am pleasantly surprised. I wasn't sure of the, even the reason for this meeting in between. We call them work sessions, you call it a special session. Semantics, wordsmithing, I guess. But much appreciated, and if you need any verification or anything from the Planning Commission, we're more than happy to help.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thanks. Okay. Questions?
I've got a, just a small question, a point of clarification that, while you're here, I may as well ask. On the maps, on the maps in the back. Particularly, I'm looking at map ten, which is the pound of land use. I think that's the one you were referring to also, right? But just, I was wondering where the designations came from. We have forest areas, you know, industrial. We've got industrial, commercial, village, rural residential, rural residential, one acre rural, two acre, and forest.
Those are our current.
Yeah, I could talk on those, if somebody wants more.
Out of the current zoning bylaws.
Okay. That makes sense. I was just wondering how forest was designated.
And as Nelson said, we're proposing a couple of changes.
Basically, back in the early seventies, there was a town plan put out, and there was bylaws and other things. And basically, the designated areas, there's been a number of changes it's gone through. But even when you look at this town plan, a lot of things that they talk about with the housing and other things are pretty much the same as what was in the other plan. What you had to do is add some, some things to do with energy and other things that are now required that you're working on, and they're changing some wording.
Sure.
And that's really what you're looking at. If you notice, I don't think any of the board members here made any comments about big changes, probably other than me with the implementation section. But other than that, I think the changes can be made pretty quick, I hope, and we can talk about them.
Another question. And Bob, by the way, those are in our current bylaw. You can see what, how we define the forest zones and where they start by slope and by height and things like that.
Okay, and the question was more around, how did they get designated?
Through years of coming up with bylaws and.
They were done by a town plan previous to this one.
And the legislative body approved it. And the legislative body approved.
Well, just to be specific, when I was looking at the, at the forest areas, I'm assuming that those have to be public lands in order to be forest.
No.
No?
No, they don't. No, they don't.
I had something to say, I forgot.
There are large tracts of privately owned land that's a zone forest. Zone forest is above a certain elevation, and there are a number of landowners who have serious disagreements with that elevation being chosen as the demarcation line between forests, where you can't have a permanent residence, and further down slope where you can. And so we've been approached a number of times by landowners who are, but it's an elevation thing.
Okay, thanks, Ed.
That brings up a question, because there is a house that's on Tower Road that is designated as a forest area and has been there forever as a resident. And I don't know how it ever got to be designated as a forest zone around that house.
By elevation, it's a matter of.
I know, but the question, I guess, we would have to ask, is elevation the right way to be declaring this a forest zone? Or should it be that we're zoning areas within the town as the forest zone, as we've done? The west side at whatever the elevation is, at the east side, whatever the elevation.
It's eleven hundred and thirteen hundred feet.
You know, versus this, what we have smack in the middle, which basically impacts some residents.
Pre-existing non-conforming structure and therefore allowed.
I know, but when they want to put on a garage or anything else, it's not supposed to.
And the discussion for changing those, or looking at those again, is all in the implementation guy.
I know, I know, and that's why I think it should be in the bylaws, so people know.
Well, that's the next step.
Yes.
As a Pownell citizen, I want to thank the Planning Commission for all the hard work and time you put into this. I know it isn't easy, and I know how hard it is to put all the time in to do it, and then have someone pull it all apart and change things. So you handled it very well. It is, it's good, it's good, you learn a lot. But I do want to encourage our Select Board, all of our Select Board and our Planning Commission, to work together to make this something really Pownell can be proud of, and we can all accept, and we can all work together. I don't want any division going on, boys and girls. I've handled Pownell kids for many years, and I don't want to do it, okay? So listen up.
Adults are much different.
Because I'll be watching. Thank you.
Thank you. Here, here, okay. Anything else?
I'd like to say something on that elevation.
Go ahead.
I'd like to say something on that elevation thing, I don't know. Hey Sid, don't run away. I was wondering, just curious. I know it's a legislative body, but it was before I was on it. Why is the east side of town higher elevation than the west side?
You said elevation, didn't say anything about slope.
Well, I believe it's, the slope got put in there by a prior legislative board.
Okay, I'm just curious about that, because I know a big landowner.
But we're, you know what? I mean, we're going to look at it all. It's all, you know, we have to go through the bylaws immediately after this. We have to create committees, we have to go through the bylaws. When, once this is passed, we have a lot to do. There's a lot to do, and that's, that's one of them. You know, we have to go through them in order of importance. So as you go back through this plan, you see at the end or during each section, there's a.
a statewide goal, and county goal, and panel goal, and there's immediately an objective, and there's an action plan, that's almost your implementation guide right there.
I know.
Implementation guide just lays it out in order for us, that's all.
I know.
And which can be taken out and used by us to do that.
And that's what I'm thinking.
Sure, yeah, I know, it'd save a few bucks in printing, too.
Very much. Yes.
Quickly, I just messaged Michael Carroll of the North Panel Church, and he already has bulletin board there, and you're welcome to hang things there, any kind of events or anything.
Thanks. And just, I know I've said it in the past, and I'm gonna say it again, it is a lot easier to sit up here, or, or at home, which is where I used to be, and pick apart what you did than it is to write it, and I really appreciate how much work went into this. I mean, it was a lot of work. I know it was a lot of work to read it, and it was a lot of work to come back with the feedback, but that doesn't compare to the work it took to create it.
Yep.
And it needs work, and it's an ongoing thing, and as soon as we pass it, it'll need amendment.
Well, you're gonna have the energy section come out, right?
And if you want me to talk about that, we're already working on that. I think Rodney has talked about it before. We're, we're very hard on one seventy-four.
Turn the mic.
We're working very hard on one seventy-four, and the reason we're doing that now, even without this current plan passed, is because the BRCRC has a grant that they're using to provide Michael Batchor's and Jim Sullivan's services to us as a town. So, in anticipation of this being passed, we want to be ready immediately to go to public hearing. That grant runs out in June, so we want to be done in the next two months with that. And it doesn't sound like we'll have this plan by then, but we'll be ready to go with everything by then.
I'd just like to say, I came to the, I went to the Planning Commission meeting where that was explained, and it made a lot of sense, it was explained in layman's terms, I understood it.
Yeah.
I'm not sure of the date, we can pull it up, but if people who watch the select board meeting, if you don't watch the Planning Commission meeting, I highly recommend you watch that particular one to understand the energy.
Where one seventy-four was discussed. Yeah, absolutely.
It's an important one to watch, made sense.
Well, watch the ones subsequent to that, too, because we're talking about citing, that's a very big deal with the state, and citing of these energy, you know, all these energy programs, and we don't have as much room as everybody thinks for these things, so that's for sure.
Yeah, I would, I would urge people that, you know, we cite, watch this YouTube with this, if people really go through like the Planning Commission and start, you know, eight months ago, and look and follow through those, it's very helpful to understand the process and how you got where you are today. And that, you know, it's sort of like people going to Netflix to watch whatever movie they want to watch, the whole series up. Go to these Youtubes, and you can see a lot about town business.
Yeah, I agree.
Following all those things. Then you're not second guessing of how something got somewhere, you'll, you'll see the process.
I can't agree more, I watch this board all the time, and I'm glad you keep it a lot more brief than ours, so.
Those two dates that I'm referring to, February second was when the Planning Commission discussed, and so you're saying the week prior, so February third?
Well, they're not all televised, the one and the second, the work session is not televised by CAT TV. So, the regular one, which is the third Tuesday of the month, is televised.
So, the thirteenth would be televised, the twentieth, I would suggest people read the minutes, if they're curious about that.
Or come to a meeting if they need clarification, glad to break that down.
Yeah, I found it, I found it really helpful to watch that.
Good, thank you.
Anything else, guys? Now, I take a motion.
Motion, New York.
Second, time for vodka.
All those in favor say aye. Aye, aye, aye.